So much for coming out. I hope you two are in recess board meetings about a night or two later. We're glad, we're glad to have you in this morning. We're gonna go ahead and get started here. We're gonna ask Supervisor Williams, if you don't mind, would you lead us in a little prayer?
Our Father in heaven will come this morning as your humble servants. We come heavenly Father thanking you for all of your goodness that you have sent our way over the many years. We pray, O Father, for October County and not only October County, but other counties. Heavenly Father, we pray for our nation as a whole. Heavenly Father, we pray that you send blessings our way and that you send understanding from, from family to family and from individuals to individuals. We pray, O Father, for enough knowledge and understanding that we might be able to do the will of October County and do it well. We pray, O Father, that when we finish here, that you will be satisfied in what we do and the actions that we take. Heavenly Father, this is our prayer. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Supervisor Williams. Next on the agenda, we have our citizens coming here. This is a time that citizens can come before the board to express concerns that they might have up to three minutes. So we're now, good morning, Mr. Turner.
Good morning, my Father. My name is Good Alvin. Citizens have some deep concerns. Then they see a few of them there. We're gonna have to do what we do if we have to go down the fire. And we have a student handbook of school system, a lot of people, uh, uh, parents don't get the handbook, they wanna dip on anybody, but yeah, but we have a handbook. Also, uh, the military guys, the militaries, we hope that, uh, we don't have to land, drop our head and do a kill shot, uh, give them threats. Uh, people sick and tired of being mistreated and taken advantage of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Make a motion to be acknowledged, Mr. Turner's report.
Motion by Supervisor Trainers, second by Supervisor, um, Carver, that we acknowledge Mr. Turner's report. All in favor?
Aight.
Motion passes, unanimous. Would that be anyone else that would like to approach the board for up to three minutes?
Yes.
Joseph Jones? Morning, Mr. Jones. Will allow you a couple of extra minutes.
First of all, I introduce myself, Joseph Jones, and I can tell you where I'm from, Crawford, Mississippi, Critical Road. I grew up down there. I put school at Beale Moore, through the Allcorn State. I'm from right here, so I'm a local Mississippi boy. Okay, but I'm gonna be short. My purpose here is to ask the board to do an investigation. And this investigation goes back to prior to 2006. And what it pertains to is a piece of property that is actually the legal parcel owned by my brother Gary Jones. And that parcel is parcel number one, three, six, dash, twenty-three, dash, zero, one, four, point, one, zero. Now, dating back prior to the year 2006, the October Hall County Mapping Department by some means has a boundary line going through the center of Gary Jones's property. That started prior to 2006 because it had to have, from my understanding, anything that happens the year later actually happens the year prior to. So as you can see here, this is the house that is attached to that parcel number. You see that property line going straight through the middle of that house. That is the property owned by then, now Gary Jones. There's another property that has a parcel number, and Gary, excuse me, Gary Jones's property is point, actually on paper, point five, eight acres of land. The next parcel that is adjacent, which is south of his property, that is owned by a family at that particular time, the Stevenson's. That parcel number one, three, six, dash, twenty-three, dash, zero, one, four, point, zero, zero. That parcel is one point four, one acres of land. Now moving forward, doing, back again, in 2006, the mapping department, I don't know what happened, but again, drew a property line through the center of Gary Jones's home. Now moving forward, 2016, the mapping department then moved that house completely off of the property that belonged to Gary Jones. Bear in mind, he still owned the property on paper, but the house was actually moved away on paper away from his land, and it was put then on the parcel of the Stevenson's that was back starting prior to 2016, but on paper. He was right here. They then placed it on parcel one, three, six, twenty-three, oh, one, three, point, zero, zero. Moving forward, twenty-seven, it stayed that way. Moving forward, twenty, it stayed that way. Twenty-two, it stayed that way. Twenty-three, stayed that way. But what happened, there's a company, LLC, that was formed in the state of Mississippi, Kemp 14 LLC. They formed their corporation in 2022, but moving forward, going up to 2024, Kemp LLC then was able to claim that house of Gary Jones. Now Kemp 14 LLC owned the parcel that is south of Gary Jones, that one point four acres. But what the mapping department then did, they switched Gary Jones south, and then they allowed for Kemp 14 LLC to go north as if they actually owned Gary Jones's property.
It was in what year?
Twenty-fourteen. And ma'am, here, right here, you can see-
So before we move any further, the one point four acres that you're talking about was originally owned by the Stevenson's?
No, sir. Uh, the one point four, one acre, yes, sir. One point four, one acres originally owned by the Stevenson's family.
Okay, sir, okay. But the, but the LLC owns it now?
The LLC owns it now because they quit claiming deed of that property to the LLC in 2022. And what happened, okay, now, what that LLC did in 2022, the LLC then in turn deeded that property, well, they, absolutely, the Stevenson's in 22, in turn deeded that property to the LLC. The LLC in turn took that warranty deed, and they submitted that warranty deed to HUD's Section Eight as if they actually owned that property with that house. They do not. That's all. So now, another thing, going all the way back from 2005, all the way up to 2024, the LLC, the Stevenson's, have been allowed to claim that house.
Let me, let me, I, I know we're past the time, but I'm, I'm gonna ask the board, if it pleases the board, do y'all wanna allow him to continue with the exact thing?
I think three to five minutes, just to get everybody-
I'll be done in thirty-five.
No, I'm-
So what, what, what the Stevenson's, and here's the documentation right here. This year, 2024, you can see here that there is a tax invoice showing that the LLC received a total of, of credit improvement, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars on a property, sir, ma'am, that does not have not one iota of a structure on it. At the same time, when they received that credit of thirty-nine thousand dollars on a structure, Gary Jones, where the house is actually located, received a tax payment of less than one hundred dollars, and that's been going on for over twenty years. Now, from my understanding, the assessments in the state of Mississippi should be, property should be assessed every four years. We're talking over twenty years this property has not been assessed. Over twenty years. And here's documentation where you can see in 2024, Kemp 14 LLC placed this house up for sale, a hundred and fifty-one thousand eight. Now, we communicated with the tax assessor's office, and now, this documentation is not something I came up with. You can see here, this documentation came from Golden State Regional Development Authority. They are the ones who provided me with this information. And we also informed the tax assessor, Ms. Walker, hey, Ms. Walker, and Mr. Mr. Toby of Golden State, he even informed them, hey, this stuff is incorrect. So when she said, well, we're gonna communicate with Barbara to help Barbara to change it. I communicated with everyone. When I talked to Ms. Barbara, sir, she changed, ma'am, she changed it. Within three days, they changed it back. So someone talked to them, say, hey, put this stuff back the way we want it. We don't know who did it, but it's fraud.
Are you all in, in litigation with this at all?
Yes, sir. But, but bear in mind, this has nothing to do with litigation.
Okay.
This prior to litigation. This we are in litigation for fraud.
This is our board's turn, and he, he needs to advise the board.
What, what are you asking the board to do? Doesn't it first ask that question?
Sir, what we're asking the board to do is do your due diligence. Four years, the law states that all property in October County must be assessed. Going back twenty years, you need to do an accounting. You need to look at, what's, let me tell you, there's one person in this county that controls all of your taxes. One person. You know who that person is? Ma'am? No, ma'am? No. Not her. She don't control your taxes. The, the mayor doesn't control your taxes. The governor does not control your taxes in October County. There's one person that controls all of your taxes. Excuse me. Her name is the lady that controls your mapping department. She controls all of your taxes. Everything. Everything. She controls-
Mr. Jones, um, I, I think we've got the gist of, of what it is that you're letting the board know. One, you're in litigation, but two, can you create a document to send to the board of the request, uh, that you have for the board, so we can, we can sort of try and work through it? Uh, if, if need be, you could, you could request to get back on the agenda, and that will give you more time, rather than citizens coming here. But we do appreciate your research, we appreciate your coming, but, uh, if you create a document and present it to the board of your request, and then we can go from there.
I have our ready.
Okay.
No, sir, you created four emails that were not as well presented as this. I give you that credit. So if I, so if I could get a document that was, you know, summarize this thing in a, in a better manner, then I'd be happy to provide that to the board.
That legal guy, excuse me, sir, he didn't tell me exactly what I need to do because I'm telling you, it's so much darker stuff going on.
Do you have an attorney?
Pro se.
You need to go get an attorney?
No, I can't afford an attorney. I've already spent twenty-six thousand dollars, sir. We can't afford an attorney. Can't do it. You know that you are charged.
Do you mind just talking to the-
I don't mind talking.
Uh, okay. Well, well, we certainly do appreciate you coming. Uh, we, we certainly agree that, you know, there are some questions here, but, uh, this is, we, we can't work this out right now. But we appreciate your coming.
Thanks a lot.
I make a motion to be accept Mr. Jones's report taken on his behalf.
Motion by Supervisor Trainers, second by Supervisor Little. All in favor? Motion passes, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to appear before the board for up to three minutes? If not, this portion of our agenda is now closed. We have, we're now down to our presentations, and we have, uh, from Slaughter and Associates, Representative, uh, Nathan Willing, Willingham, and, uh, Mike Slaughter himself. Uh, so good morning, good to see you again.
Good morning, good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and, uh, let me ask you this, uh, is there certain timeframe we need to sort of wrap this up then? We're gonna do a little presentation update on the comprehensive plan, then talk about some implementation too.
Okay, that's, that's-
Twenty minutes? Okay. That would be plenty, twenty, twenty minutes, that would be plenty. So, uh, I just wanna make sure we start out and knew what that, that was, because we didn't wanna, I know you're on here all day, and I promise we'll get out of here in twenty minutes or, or less. But, uh, again, most of you know my name is Mike Slaughter. Uh, it used to be Slaughter and Associates, but it's Slaughter and Willingham now, so this is my business partner. Uh, Nathan's been with me about two and a half years or so, and, uh, and he's really, I hate to admit it, but he's really Doctor Willingham, so, but I call him Nathan. So, uh, he's a huge asset to the firm and, uh, does a, does a great job and all. So what we're here today, uh, is just to give you an update on the comprehensive plan, talk about that, and then sort of wrap up with some of the important implementation tools, especially as they would apply to October Hall County, uh, where Starkville and Mississippi State University is located. Uh, and, but also, I'd like to go back ten years and commend you all for doing a comprehensive plan approximately ten years ago. Uh, and, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that at that point in time, and then commend you again on updating your comprehensive plan. So obviously, you recognize the importance of that. Uh, and we, we have, we've done a, a lot of comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances and so forth around the state, especially in cities, but more and more counties are, are doing them, just like right now, we're working in Forest County, where Hattiesburg and the University of Mississippi is located, Pearl River County, and Marshall County. Of course, I've told you before, we're gonna talk a little bit about it today on our, uh, implementation tools. We did, uh, a comprehensive plan update for LaFayette County several years ago, and actually, uh, they adopted a zoning ordinance, future land use map in the comprehensive plan, and zoning map, uh, and zoning ordinance there as well, so they recognized it important. So I wanted to commend you on that, and commend you especially on updating. I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan. He's gonna talk about the comprehensive plan, and then we'll sort of wrap up with some of the implementation tools. Thanks again.
Thank you. One thing I'll mention, Mike said LaFayette County, we got an email from the Director of Planning in LaFayette County in the middle of last week that was asking us to take a look at how they're applying their zoning ordinance.
Yep.
Mike worked on that comp plan seven, eight years ago.
Right.
So they're still using that plan, and they're still allowing us to, to be a part of implementation of that plan.
Yeah.
So we're very, very happy to have that continued relationship. I just wanna touch a little bit upon the, the structure of the comprehensive plan, the process by which it was developed, and where we are, uh, some of the recommendations that we've incorporated in the comprehensive plan, and then where we are right now going forward with its adoption and implementation. So y'all, well, we've all met individually, we've talked about comprehensive plan for quite a few months now. Um, essentially, comprehensive plan is a twenty to twenty-five year time horizon roadmap for the physical growth and development of your community. It is a guide for improving the quality of life of residents of this county, right? It is, it is a way for us to better understand the desires of your residents and how those desires can be put into effect by the, by the leadership of board supervisors and by your department heads going forward over the next twenty to twenty-five years. It forms a framework for understanding how land use and growth and development move forward in ways that are compatible and that contribute to a high quality of life for residents, and how we can begin to reshape patterns of development that maybe did not have some of the desired outcomes in the past, or shape things going forward in a way that we prevent or head off of the past, so to speak, some of the, some of the more undesirable outcomes of uncontrolled growth and development. So comprehensive plan is restructured by state planning legislation here in Mississippi. There are four required elements of that plan. Uh, there's some goals and objectives that are required. There's a land use plan or a future land use plan is a required part of it. Uh, there's community facilities plan and transportation plan. And so you'll see each of those is incorporated into the comprehensive plan draft that we've prepared for October County. Uh, one of the most important elements of it, of course, is the goals and objectives because that shapes the, the direction of planning, uh, and that, the process of developing those goals and objectives is very much community and leadership engaged. Uh, our firm, we met individually with each one of the supervisors, we met individually with each one of your department heads, we took that information to develop a sort of baseline understanding from a leadership perspective about what the goals and objectives of the county are, and then we took that into public forums across the county in different locations where we listened to feedback from the public, and we helped, uh, we used that information to help shape an, an assessment of the county's growth and development patterns as well as the desirable outcomes over time that became the goals and objectives in the plan. So there's twelve different goals and associated objectives in the plan. They cover things like housing, commerce, industry, transportation, public safety for fire protection, police protection, emergency management services. Again, all of that was derived with, with the input of leadership that was supplemented by the input of, of the people of, of October County. And the reason that's so valuable and important is because this plan has to be October County's plan, it has to be informed by your constituents, it has to include a direction of growth and development that is acceptable to both the leadership and the people, otherwise, it simply won't be implemented. It has to be October County's plan or, or will not be implemented. So we put together twelve basic goals that, that direct themselves toward the elements of physical growth and development that include things like infrastructure, transportation connectivity, education, and of course, land use planning and growth and development. With respect to land use planning, growth and development, we have also assembled a future land use plan element that is part of the comprehensive plan for October County. Uh, again, this is shaped by leadership's perspective as well as the perspective of the general public. I've got a copy of that, of an illustration of a future land use map here that illustrates the, the plan that is included. Sorry about that. The thing we heard time and time and time again in October County from residents, from leaders alike, is that October County is a rural county that has traditional rural values that need to be preserved and protected, but it has also seen those rural values come into, uh, interaction, I'll say, engagement with urbanization and growth and development in and around, and especially to the east of, of the city of Starkville. So there's a lot of urbanization that's occurring in an otherwise rural county, and so that creates some tensions that have to be balanced and managed going forward. It creates tensions and strains infrastructure systems and planning for development in the areas adjacent to Starkville, and it creates tensions with the legitimate concerns of residents in other areas of the county that their quality of life, which is primarily rural, will be disrupted as you attempt to, to manage and control growth that is more urban in character, right? So we really tried, as part of our land use plan and our goals and objectives, to, to be sensitive to that balance in between rural and urban, between rural areas of the county and urbanizing areas of the county, because if growth in the urbanizing areas of the county is not managed effectively, it'll create dangerous transportation conflicts, it'll create dangerous development patterns, it'll create infrastructure systems that are not of high quality, and going forward, those will eventually cause hazards to the health and safety of the residents in this area, of people that travel through and visit this area, and also create strains on the, on the public coffers and on the, on the tax revenues of the county as you try to catch up on and fix problems of infrastructure that's related to growth and development that was not planned and implemented and put in place in adequate manner in the first place. So the reason we plan is to get out ahead of these problems, head them off of the past so that they don't spill over and cause a negative fiscal impact all the way across the county, or a negative impact on the quality of life of people who are living, working, visiting these areas. And so we've attempted to do that throughout our recommendations by being very, very measured and moderate in our approach and balancing the needs of, of rural communities with those of an urbanizing area. And so recommendations do include the development and implementation of the zoning ordinance that is, that is cognizant of these tensions, that is, that puts in place controls that are appropriate for urban area, but also maintains limited controls in rural areas to allow more flexibility and to preserve that rural quality of life and character of folks out in the county. We're recommending also updates to your subdivision regulations and to your development practices that ensure that development is constructed to a high quality engineering standard so that the county receives infrastructure for its acceptance and maintenance policies. You receive infrastructure that's built well and will be lasting and will not eventually be, or in a short time be a detriment or a drain on your, your, your public finance because it has to be maintained or rebuilt because it wasn't initially built to a high quality standard. So those are the kind of recommendations that we're making, um, with regard to, to growth and development practices. With regard to, uh, building infrastructure and structural improvements, our recommendation is that you begin by addressing the most pressing of your concerns with respect to multifamily and commercial development and building codes and standards for that type of development. Evaluate the outcomes and the administrative processes that are needed to implement those kind of codes for just those more intensive, commercial and multifamily, uh, uses, and then evaluate whether there's a need for additional code or code enforcement when it comes to other residential development types there out of county. So again, stepwise. How do you, because this is gonna be a question that they're asking, how do you put a zoning in for a certain amount of property? In other words, we know that it may be right outside Starkville, it may be a stronger, and I'll put zoning, we'll say that.
Yep.
If outside of that line, you don't have those restrict, those same restrictions. How, how, how do you delineate that when you're, when you're supposed to be doing it for the whole county? Is there a way to do that? Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We've done it in, in many other counties that we've worked in because counties are different than cities, okay? So what we typically do is we, we start with the future land use map, and we identify the areas that are more intensive development and less intensive development. The areas that are less intensive development, we design the zoning designation in the district to have fewer controls. The areas that are more intensive for development, we design those districts to have more intervention and more controls. And we actually have a, an example here from a hated rival, but I think it's very illustrative in the way that it was done in LaFayette County.
And let, and let me ask this question, because that's a really good question that you're asking there. The whole answer is, Nate, what I'd like to do, because we, I, I plan on hitting on this, that very question, but let me ask, Nathan, did you wanna wrap, did you wanna wrap, can we wrap up the comprehensive plan? Then we, we, that's where we were going. You, you, you got just a little ahead of us.
Sure, sorry.
Let's wrap, no problem. What we'd like to do is wrap up the comprehensive plan, and then we're gonna go into that. Not that we won't answer your questions, we will, but that's what we'd like to do, if that's no problem. And because we don't wanna confuse the two documents, they're totally different.
True, true. Great point, bye.
But they're tied together. Yes.
Physical development, your land use controls, your subdivision regulations, your zoning ordinance, your potential for building codes, those are basic health and safety standards that protect life and safety of people, and should be applied where you observe that there are problems that potentially impact quality of life or safety, and they should not be overburdening to other places that are not presenting the same type of development problems. I wanna reiterate that because that's an important and essential part of the development philosophy that we heard from October County and put into- philosophy that we heard from Oktibah County and put into the comprehensive plan. Moving on from physical development codes, there are a lot of, of course, public systems, county services that shape the propensity for growth and development, the opportunities for growth and development. We address those in both the goals and objectives as well as in the community facilities portion of the plan. Those are the infrastructure systems, the roads, the water, the sewer, the often overlooked until they're needed sheriff and fire department. Those are essential county services that are provided and supported by the county without which growth and development is not happening. If you don't have fire protection, you're at risk. If you don't have police or sheriff's protection, you're certainly at risk. If you don't have water or adequate wastewater treatment for the type of growth and development that is proposed or planned, then that growth and development is not going to be, is not going to happen or is not going to happen safely in a way that doesn't potentially make people sick. So the last component that I'll touch on is that community facilities plan, which again ties back to the goals and objectives and describes the county services that are essential services for promoting growth and development. Between community facilities and codes and ordinances and growth management tools that the county can adopt, we put those together into the goals and objectives, which inform the future land use and transportation plan and also the community facilities plan, which are again the four essential and required components of a comprehensive plan. And then we all have a question about implementation.
Thank you, Nathan. And I think we've got about five minutes. Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't want y'all running me out of here. Thank you very much. Because this is important. You took the words out of my mouth, I was just about to say, I'm going to look this way and say, this is very important for the county, and I'm going to look this way, this is very important for the county, not just you, but the people of the county. So great job, Nathan, on that. One thing I want to start out and say is, is we're working on a comprehensive plan, which is a very important document. It helps guide growth and development, it helps with your departments, making sure they have what they need to best serve the people in the most efficient way they can. Looking at community facilities, whether it's community centers or fire stations or police stations, sheriff department stations, parks and recreation, whatever it may be. All of that's important and it's covered well in the comprehensive plan by many way one. And just like Nathan said, this has got to be Oktibah County's plan. And when I say that, I'm looking this way and that way, it's got to be Oktibah County's plan. It's very important and it's required by state law if you ever do want to adopt any type of land use controls or zoning like you were asking. It is required, you got to have this in order to do that. But I'm going to say this, as important as it is and as helpful as it is, when it comes to land use controls or things like that, or subdivision regulations, you know how much deep it has from enforcement of what can be developed and what can't, zero. That's where the zoning ordinance is going to be. That is like law, it's enforceable, the zoning ordinance is adopted. So those are two different documents. We've only been retained by Oktibah County to do your comprehensive plan update from what we did almost ten years ago. And again, I commend you on that. But I did want to take the opportunity, and there's already a question on the table about some of the implementation tools, and just to give you an example of some of the implementation tools, zoning ordinance that Nathan hit on, subdivision regulations, and you can get into other things where it has to do with sign ordinances and historic preservation, other things that may be important to your community. And so we did one using example, Nathan's already acknowledged as a hated rival up there in LeFayre County. So, but y'all overlooked that for a number of years, so. And I've done a lot of work for the city of Starkville, as y'all well know, appreciate the opportunity to do that. But your question was, you know, we have development, like the city of Starkville, they have a comprehensive plan, they have a zoning ordinance that controls land uses and all in Starkville, but outside, in unincorporated areas, do you know how much zoning power or land use controls that they have, or police power is really the correct word, outside of their city limits, zero. Do you know who that's up to? Oktibah County Board of Supervisors, that's the ones that can provide that. Now, what we did in LeFayre County, and that was adopted, I think around 2017, so about eight years ago, is that, is we, in a comprehensive plan, that's a unique document, unique, there's not another one, like Oktibah County, it's unique, you can pick up, LeFayre County is totally different, Forest County, totally different, still has the same backbone and requirement for it to go as all of the planning legislation, but it's tailored to your county. What we did in LeFayre County, when it came to zoning ordinance, because there's a lot of technical, there's a lot of legal in there and all, we actually took a Rankin County one, which Rankin County had been into zoning business for a long time, it was a fresh new document. What we did is we tailored that, and I'm talking about the text right now, we tailored the text to be exactly what LeFayre County Board of Supervisors wanted. And I'll tell you, on one end, I had a supervisor that, in LeFayre County, that was, he was an attorney, and he wanted some strict land use or zoning controls. On the other end, I had some guys that were born and raised in LeFayre County, and they didn't feel like we needed to tell anybody what to do or what, so I didn't know in the end if we were going to adopt zoning ordinance or not. But we worked through that, we went to all four corners of the county, had public meetings and tailored a zoning map and zoning ordinance to exactly what LeFayre County needed, and ultimately they adopted that. And what we did is around the city, we had more land use controls that were needed in urbanizing areas because they were building apartments, condominiums, subdivisions, commercial and retail development, all that was needed, but there were not, there was no land use controls. And we need to ensure that the property develops to its highest and best use. That's really what it's about, make sure it develops to its highest and best use. We can't, we're not saying you can't have a mobile home in the right location, we're not saying you can't have a hog farm in the right location, but we got to have them in the right location. And that just makes sense to protect your investment in your property or their investment in their property. And you have a right to have a place to live, to have a place to work and so forth. Once we got outside of the urbanizing areas of the city of Oxford, and I'll go right over here and we'll bring this around so we can see a little better, is, and you can see here, the city of Oxford's in white, so that was already planned for and zoned. And you can see how we have these urbanizing areas and then some pockets in certain locations. But you see transportation corridors, like Highway six coming in and out of Oxford east and west, Highway seven to the north and south through Oxford. You see this light green? That's an A1, an A1, which has, all right, and let me go to the darker green, you see the darker green? That's an A2, which pretty much allows the majority of the county to continue to do what they're doing with their property. And you can see it's the majority of it, they can continue to do. You know what protection we provided these out here though? By special exception, you just don't have the right to go in and put in a hog farm anywhere, a scrap metal yard anywhere, an automobile junkyard anywhere, because I could build a home out here, a nice home, or subdivision, and then somebody right next, across the street from it, put in a scrap metal yard junkyard, how attractive is that going to be? Well, maybe that business is needed, it just needs to be in the right location. Now, it's not saying they can't do it, they have to come before the board of supervisors and say, here, present their request for whatever land use that is, because, and it's a short list, whether it has hog farm, chicken houses, scrap metal yard, automobile junkyard, whatever's important, that most of the people out here want protection from. Other than that, they continue to do what they continue to do. As we get along these transportation corridors, we tighten down just a little bit, it's still an ag, but we tighten down just a little bit on what's allowed, not allowed because you're protecting these transportation corridors and these higher developing areas. Then as you got in closer to the city, this is where you have those more urbanizing uses that have a lot of development pressure. Well, we prepared this zoning, the zoning maps, the zoning text and all, and when it came time to adopt the comprehensive plan, they had it on the agenda to adopt the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance at one board meeting. And so I was in attendance, it came up, the comprehensive plan, a motion, a second, to adopt the comprehensive plan in LeFayre County. It was unanimous to adopt the comprehensive plan, so I said, well, we'll see what goes with the zoning ordinance. I felt pretty good about it though, because we had done our, we had done our work and been to all four corners of the county and worked with supervisors and really tailored them a good comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Well, motion and a second came up to adopt the comprehensive plan, there was a vote, unanimous vote, and once that was done, the people that were in attendance in the audience applauded that they had adopted a comprehensive plan and their first ever zoning ordinance. And just like Nathan said, they're still implementing that today and all. So I'm saying that talk, Oktibah County, is that this is an implementation tool that I strongly believe is needed here and will make this a better place and protect and enhance the quality of life. And Nathan mentioned quality of life, but do you know what quality of life is? Those four elements of the comprehensive plan help define those, especially the goals and objectives. Quality of life is about having good jobs. You want to have a good job so you can make a living and enjoy your family. It's also about having good housing, you want to have a good place to raise your family and enjoy your family time. It's about having good schools, the legislature in Jackson recognized schools are very important to each and every, I mean, if you don't have good schools, oftentimes you have a downward spiral, spiraling community. It's also about public safety. Do we often call the police department, the fire department? No, no we don't, but when we need them, we need them, and they need the roles. It's also about, people take for granted their water and sewer and drainage and all of that, but when it's, when they, when it's gone, you know, they miss it. And last thing, but it's still important, parks and recreation, that's very important for an overall quality of life, that's what your comprehensive plan is doing. This implementation tool takes that to the land use level, that I have a nice home, I want to make sure it stays that way, I have a nice place for jobs, and we want, we don't want to exclude anything, rubble home, park, chicken houses, a hog farm, a scrap metal yard, they've just got to go in the right place and develop to the highest and best use. This comprehensive plan is a foundation of that. Zoning ordinance, land use control is tailored for Oktibah County. I really think with time, it would certainly be embraced and thankful that you did. Subdivision regulations, as Nathan mentioned, where if you have apartments or condominiums coming in, you need to make sure they have adequate water, sewer, drainage, fire hydrants, and drainage, streets and drainage, where it doesn't clog up your county roads, destroy your county roads, they need to be responsible for improving those roads that run along their development. All of that's very important, that way that burden's not shifted to your taxpayers, as Nathan mentioned and all. So these are things that we feel, as planners, that we feel strongly about. We're not here telling this board of supervisors what they should do or shouldn't do, that's not our job. It's our job to, as professionals, to recommend to you from the comprehensive planning and implementation tool standpoint, what our recommendations are. That's up to you all to decide that, and it won't hurt my feelings or Nathan's, whatever you all decide, but we both strongly recommend, once you have this comprehensive plan adopted, seriously consider the implementation tools, land use controls, updating your subdivision regulations, and there could be some more. Nathan, was anything I left out? I think that's it. Mr. President, I'll turn the meeting back over to you, if there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
We certainly thank you all for the work you've done on updating our comprehensive plans. So at this, at this point, we're going to open it up and see if we've got any questions coming.
I just want to make sure that I was, that I was going to try, the comprehensive plan is something completely separate from the zoning and ordinance plan, that's something y'all have to go back to the drawing board and did.
Totally different document, totally different document. If you picked it up, it would probably look like, like this, closed up, have zoning ordinance, and then when you flip through, it's like what's allowed, what's not allowed, basically by each, each design.
And how long does that take to create one of those documents?
You know, considering the public input and making sure, because it's going to have to be tailored for Oktibah County, that's the only way it's going to work, that's the only way it's going to be adopted. And the only way it can be adopted is each and every supervisor understands what's in it, what's the purpose, how it's going to work. So I would say that's probably going to take, on average, maybe four to six months, but it could take longer, just depend on the process, but on average, something like that. What we would recommend, this is a scratch document because this is just for Oktibah County, we recommend taking some examples of maybe some other county's zoning ordinances and starting with that and then scratching out what we don't like, adding in what we do like. We wouldn't start with a blank computer screen on a zoning ordinance. So that would be a leg up there on the timing. The other, the main part is making sure we get the county leaders' input, such as yourselves, and the citizens' input and tailoring it exactly what, and we have to go to all four corners of the county, and it requires public meetings, public hearings before it's ever adopted. So we're not excluding the public, certainly not excluding the board of supervisors, but the public will be brought along the whole way and have opportunity to ask questions. So it takes, like, on average, about four to six months. This right here, very important document, it just takes straight up, no ticket, but you got to have it for any type of land use controls, and it's a very important document. Zoning ordinance, somebody comes in and wants to put in a scrap metal yard, you all have to say so, right now, not so much, and so far, any other things. And, but believe me, we're not one to put a land use control in that would, that comes across as anti-growth or telling you what you really can or can't do with your property. That's the reason our ag zone was so big in LeFayre County, most of that was rural, they continued to do what they wanted. We even have in there hardship, if you need to put a mobile home behind your house, assuming you've got sewer, whatever's needed, or hardship, you got a son or a daughter that has to come back home for whatever reason, then you can come to the board of supervisors and do that, if that's what you want, that's what we have in LeFayre County. So well, you can tailor that for the county. And it's not to hurt anyone, it's to protect that quality of life, I promise you that.
Well, I make a motion, we accept the draft 2025 comprehensive plan for the purpose of public review, and set the public hearing for the regular meeting of October 6, 2025.
It's been motioned by supervisor trainer, that we adopt the draft comprehensive plan subject by supervisor, let's say any other discussion before we, before we move on. Go ahead.
This comprehensive plan, of course, it looks good on paper, but actually implementing it and to actually seeing how it's really working out in our community is a whole entirely different now. So I see on here, well, we're going to revisit this every five years. To me, every five years is too long because we don't really know what we're doing. So I think it ought to be revisited and look at things that need to be reconsidered more than, more often than every five years. more than, more often than every five years.
Let me say this, what I just heard from this gentleman is very constructive criticism, and I'll tell you why I agree with it. In planning in general, the comprehensive plan is a 20 to 25 year planning horizon. And a lot of people might interpret that thing, okay, I got a plan that's good for 20 years. I don't have to look at it again for 20 years. No, that's not right. In planning school, it's what teach, at a very minimum, you need to revisit every five years. But that's, that's, that's an amendment. You, you can, you can re, re-review it. Like if something comes in, you adopt this thing this year, something happen next year, big plant or whatever come in, you need to update your comprehensive plan next year. So you're exactly right. It does have to, you don't have to wait five years. You certainly not, don't need to wait 20. So every community's different, every county's different. So if this thing needs to be updated prior to that five years, then certainly that's what you need to do.
My concern is that we, we update it and take a close look at it, especially now, because we just now implemented. We, we actually seeing it now go from paper to actuality.
And, and implementing is such an important, no matter how good this looks on paper or whatever's in there, whatever's written on it and all, you got to implement it. Because if you don't implement it, you know what it is? Just wastes the money and you don't have money to waste and you don't want to waste money. This needs to be implemented because it's your plan, it's their plan. And so it needs to be implemented and if it needs to be updated in two years from now, four years from now, or what, it needs to be updated. You know, waiting eight years, 10 years, that's, that's too long, especially for Octavia County, Mississippi. So I agree with it.
And I, just to re, to support what Mike said, this is new, anything new. You want it, you want to move incrementally with it. You want to be very, it's experimental. You want to see the outcome of what your decisions are and then make appropriate adjustments so that you lead the way instead of getting wrong down the line and creating a direction that you didn't anticipate or wanted to go.
Basically what it is, is experimental.
And you, you, and you look at implementing that thing? If you need to make adjustments while on the fly, then you do that. This is collectively from you all, department heads, citizens, the, the direction that we have, well, in county, based on Octavia County. Not what Nathan wants, not what Mike wants. Our job was to put together a professional document reporting for the state planning legislation or state planning law and do it in a way that's easy to read, understand, and implement. But ultimately, get Octavia County where they want to be five, 10, 20 years down the road.
And I'll just reiterate, this document was developed with a lot of input from the community.
Absolutely.
From the department heads of Octavia County, from the board supervisors, from our public. That's, you all went out and, and addressed the public and had the inputs, had public, public hearings and, and what you all did was, was gather what was given to you from, from the public and, and all the other people that had the input and developed this. So today, you, you all have come back to us and said, okay, after all of our meetings, this is what we heard.
That's right.
And we put together this comprehensive plan. Now, this is just stage one. If we adopt this comprehensive plan, then we've got to go back and actually let you all put together some zoning to go along with this. And that will be another round of, of public hearings and, and input.
That's exactly right. One hundred percent correct. Everything you said is that when we went out to the citizens, especially, we did, we had a, a plan. We told them what a comprehensive plan was, what the elements of a comprehensive plan was. And then we, we told them about goals and objectives, and that's really where you get the grassroots input. And we, we told them what that was and then we went through talking points, topics, what it has to do with housing, jobs, school. A lot of that's quality of life stuff that really adds up. When you add up all those topics, draw a line, add it up, quality of life, and that's very important. So we went through all of that and gave them that opportunity to talk and have their input. The one thing I would, did want to close out with today is I don't want to confuse the thing. You can, this is the comprehensive plan part. October 6, if you so choose, you can adopt this comprehensive plan. If we need to make some edits between now and then, we can do it. You decide, and it's not rushed, if you decide to adopt it a later date, it's up to this board. But we want you to have a, a time to review it, look at it, and be comfortable with it. If October 6 is that date, then that's that date. But after that, I would strongly encourage, you've already stole a little, a little bit of my thunder, if you want to go into the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations update, and I'm not excluding your county engineer or anything on that, I'm just selling what's best in our professional opinion for Octavia County, based on what we've seen and what we've heard.
I, I can say this, the meeting I sat in on, and we've got supervisors that sat in on the meetings that you all held for the public to have the input, that was not one person that said Octavia County doesn't need a comprehensive plan.
That's right.
I think everybody was in agreement that we need a comprehensive plan and now we need to work out the details on that.
And let me tell you, the process of working out the detail. Work out the detail and the process, Mr. President, will be the same as we move forward with land use controls. It'll all be right in the middle of it and so will the public that will be brought right along.
Page 57, we've got one, there's animal control coming to get with the sheriff and determining if there will be some animal control. Secondly, having worked with the all of the city, I would say when you talk about the comprehensive plan, there are probably not a single citizen that opposed my position when you get into zoning regulations, there's going to be a whole lot of people. So quickly to understand, I'm probably going to be your other side guy, probably pushing against not the comprehensive plan with zoning regulations. The only thing that gave me comfort today was seeing, you're saying that there would be potential for, we call that an urban neighborhood, urban edge neighborhood areas and pockets and things. I don't see you getting that done in four to six months, because I've only been on this board for two years. And I'll tell you that inside my district, this, this northwest quadrant picks apart about 18 different neighborhoods and families that all think different and different types of people and different types of lifestyle and everything. So almost individual in the county, it's not like the city where this blanket approach to work. In my area, you have higher up range neighborhoods, that's probably all on board with zoning regulations. You pick, don't step on the property without calling first. You have, because there's an explosive growth in Octavia County right now through three or four things. One, you've got about 6.7% population increase, but you've got 21% increase in housing over the last 10 years. And that is through perception of extremely high taxes in the city of Starville, whether true or not is perceived. People want to move out of the country for equality of life and part of the reason they move, they don't want government overreach. So you have a higher percentage of people moving to counties that don't want government where it's perceived a reality, they're choosing an urban lifestyle because they want to be left alone per se. But I'll say that with that growth now, just on, like in Engle Road, we, we're starting to see people that want nature away, what they want in the county. So you've got all, that's a, I mean, it's just, it's hard for me to, to campaign and really understand going down that way. So you've got until you get there, because it's such a diverse county. You've got, you've got, what I said, you've got an explosive growth in Octavia County. I think to what Ms. Little often is, is in defense of, she's saying, you've got to have something, because you've got these developers that understand they can move the county with less regulation, so they're building neighborhoods. There needs to be some control measure on, you know, best thing to get into the infrastructure and sewage. But it's, it's unique. The road, and I'll say there's two things that stuck out when I was reading this comprehensive plan this weekend. One was improved road maintenance. It's become one of the top, you know, things that's just continued, I think they said in comment or something like that. But then the two was the county like it continues to come up as, as something that people want to see come back. So, but no, I'll say the only, the thing that gave me comfort today, you start naming hog, I mean, not saying I'm a market of hog farms and scrap yards, but if you can, if you can tell people, hey, there's a, there's a place for that.
Yeah.
So you're just saying, but when, if you present this as a blanket, we're going to put codes, everybody's telling you, you're going to get shut down for six seconds. That's reality. All of us, there were our constituents facing more, you know who your constituents are, I know mine, I'm getting a lot of pushback on, on zoning. I, I don't want to tell people what to do, but you can say, hey, you know, it's a strategic approach to where and when and how we're going to, you know, try to develop. I, I live on New Light Road, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm right in here. And I would say this whole area is more or less a city field here in the country, but it's, it's individual, choose to live two miles back from there, they don't perceive services where they're just everyone back to, back to the island. Out here, totally different.
And I think it's incumbent on us, the world of the public, on implementing, on them, to describe how the tools we're recommending preserve and protect the neighborhoods people live in, where they live, the way they are asking for those neighborhoods to be protected in the country, in rural parts. There's not that much need, but when you mention those semi-family residential neighborhoods that have a suburban, rural feel, those neighborhoods have a different character altogether and therefore have different difficult, so we can create zones that recognize and establish the protections needed so that those folks that are in those neighborhoods, suburban type neighborhoods out in the county, aren't overburdened with regulation, but they do have some protection against things like scrap yards and hog farms and, and other development types that may not be appropriate for that neighborhood. How do you neighborhood define it? It's defined by the character of that neighborhood. Zoning designation should match onto the different character types that you have across your county in a way that protects those neighborhoods.
I would, I would definitely support the comprehensive plan. We're getting more interactive than, than getting into zoning. I would say the four to six month timeframe, because I would, you know, I would definitely take you through my area and show you some, it's. Plus, there's different terrain and you could be a strudel or a blow. I'm, I'm a mind scanning, it's, you'll definitely move up here. I was surprised that the zoning, it used to be more southern city with motorhomes, I'd imagine, I, I was, it's just all over. I think being aboard town and the way that it incorporated and enjoyed being there, it should help to me, but the way that it incorporated, always had a hot spot. It's just the way, and every time that it can feel.
Hey, can I respond just to hit right quick and come back to, back to that? Is that I, I appreciate everything that you said and most importantly, I heard everything that you said. And I've heard it before, exactly what you're saying. I appreciate your honesty on that. And again, I got some more constructive criticism, criticism here from a technical standpoint and what I think would be reasonable this four to six months. You're right, that's a guess on my part. It could very well take longer, but from a technical standpoint and going through it, I think it would at least take that long. It may take longer. But what we want to answer during this process, a lot of things you just verbalized right there. And this has got to be for the betterment of, betterment of Octavia County, but not for the restriction of Octavia County. That's what it's got to be, sorry. That's what it was for LeFayette County. Yes, sir?
Yeah. I'm in agreeance with the comprehensive plan, I'm just trying to clarify some issues about all of this. Howard 25 South, it's some mixed development that's taken place there. What, how do you classify, classify that area? I can't really.
Low highway.
Low highway 25 South.
Coming out of town?
Coming out of town.
Suburban, so primarily focused on residential development and new subdivisions in that area until you reach about Walt Hill Road and then along this line, so transition.
What load is until you may reach?
Uh, where Old 25 comes in, just a little south of there. It, it transitions from sort of suburban.
Where the bypass, where the bypass, ever said, low 25.
And in this area on the south, east part of the county is more, we class it more as rural in character. So what we, what we're considering is there's going to be demand for housing and residential development in this orange area, just as I think Supervisor Carver mentioned, this is more residential in character up here. It's very likely to build the same because of the proximity to your highway system and to the city. And then further out, it looks and feels more rural because your transportation network is not as well developed, your infrastructure is not in place in those locations. So what that looks like practically speaking is more houses and more subdivisions in this orange area, more residential development in this orange area and less at lower densities, larger lot sizes out here in rural parts.
But I, I, I kind of did when I moved around that and you were talking about the pockets and stuff. So basically, whatever is, is there is a starting.
That's cool.
Yeah. So, you know, so when they're building, you got subdivision out there.
We look at the base, the land use, that what's existing there. And then ultimately, come up with the highest and best use, you look at the location, how close is it to Starville? That's an impact, just like you were talking about, you like living close to Starville and it's easy to get to and then the services. But you look at what's, what's existing, you look at, at the distance to city center, and then you look at availability, you look at transportation corridors, and there's a lot of things that come into it and, and determine what's the highest and best use for that property right now. And if you're out, if you're out somewhere and there's no sewer and no water and someone's wanting to build a densely developed subdivision, then they may not be able to, because they're going to need fire protection, they're going to need sanitary sewer and it's not available. One thing you mentioned on, on subdivision regulations and so forth, you could have someone come in here and I'm for making money, I'm pro growth, but you could have a developer coming here from Texas, Florida, or Mississippi, I don't care, and develop a subdivision out in the county on two acre lots or whatever, and you go out on a sunshiny day and look at the new road and look at the lots and all of you say, wow, I want to buy a lot in here and build a house. Well, about two, three years later, the roads fall apart, when it rains, the yards flood or whatever, when you turn on the water, you have low water pressure, whatever, and the septic tank's not working, you got to ensure from good subdivision regulations that what look, you call it on a sunshiny day, is stays that way, because in two years, the roads fall apart. And, and you know where the baleter is? On some Caribbean island somewhere, enjoying life. And there's nothing wrong with that either, but you don't need to be left with that, with that problem. It needs to be done right. And these people don't need to be left with it, because that's who has to pay insurance for it. Once it's a public road, then taxpayer money pays for it, once that point is gone. So let, let's just be clear when we leave here today. We're not trying to, to, for you to make a decision on land use control, zoning, subdivision regulations. We want you to understand this comprehensive plan, but we did want to mention some of the implementation tools that you can be thinking about. And then once you get this comprehensive plan adopted, we'll be glad to come back and talk about those if you want and, and proceed as you all direct us to. And just like in LeFayette County, they hired us to do that zoning ordinance ending and I didn't know if we were going to adopt it, mainly because of the supervisory. I wasn't too worried about the citizens, I sort of thought it brings that along pretty good with the supervisors. But it was unanimous vote and, and citizens applauded. I'm not saying every, every citizen in LeFayette County was for it. If I did, you wouldn't have any respect for me. But ultimately, it was adopted, still implementing today, and that's a testament to what, what we did and what's still going on there. So, and it was right for them.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yes, I'd like to discuss the implementation of this thing. I mean, when I say the implementation, I'm talking about implementation of the adoption. We had originally talked about having some open houses in, in various locations, 14, 15, leading up to this board. That did not get done primarily due to preoccupation on my part with the budget and some other, with the sale of the hospital. With that said, I've spoken with Mr. Willingham, Dr. Willingham, and we were. and we were looking at potentially doing it at the safe room on the twenty-second. Now, what I'd like to do is put this document on our website. I'd like to put it at the local libraries, those kind of things, and then hold the open house at the safe room on September the twenty-second. Would that be something that the board will be available to?
Can we?
What we'll do is go ahead and carry the motion and then we'll set the date for the public. So if the motion and the second to adopt the comprehensive, move forward, adopt the comprehensive plan. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll, what date, the twenty-second?
Yes, sir.
We'll set a date for the public to come out and have input, listen to the presentation. On the twenty-second, what time? Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, on the twenty-second. At the safe room.
Motion we accept it, can't administer a recommendation.
Motion by Supervisor Trainor, second by Supervisor Little. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your cooperation.
Y'all are accepting the draft and then on October you want to adopt.
October sixth, we will hold a public hearing and adopt it.
Okay, so I just wanted to make clear.
Thank you for that. We're just accepting the draft, we will hold a public hearing at October sixth, we will adopt the comprehensive.
And let's see, on the public hearing, the open house is not, that's not really a public hearing, is it?
No, no, no. It's just simply an opportunity for, on the September the twenty-second, will simply be an opportunity for the public to get a look at it and ask questions of Dr. Willingham or whoever presents on your pad. And then, of course, we'll put it in the libraries and on the website.
Okay, right, all right, good deal.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your questions and comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now, we've got, we've got a couple of insertions here. First, we've got one insertion, our taxes us collected. Ms. Jo Ellen Walker, good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
My apologies for this not being on the agenda, but this is to get the application for the certifications from the Department of Revenue that I didn't need to sign on my board president, T N to D O R.
The motion, so motion by Supervisor Trainor, second by Supervisor Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I'll have your copy of your debt.
Would you see a cigarette on that?
I sure will.
In there?
No, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, I wrote, Mr. Bigg Cottler, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna try to make this quick. It won't be on me.
I'm just kidding.
It won't be on me. One thing, I have a. I need to get approval for the quote. I think y'all got it in your package for the driveway repairs.
Your friendly craftman. Second, one for approval. Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainor, that we approve the quote for your friendly craftman in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
One of the things, my, one of my pad foot rollers went down. And of course, part is gonna happen, it's coming from overseas, but that's what most of them. They talking about maybe three to four weeks. And if need be, I may need to rent a machine to put in the place of it until it, that one is repaired. I've got a quote for forty-nine hundred dollars. And I'd like to get the board approved and rent that machine if need.
Motion by Supervisor Trainor, second by Supervisor Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
What kind of machine was that, I'm sorry?
It'll be a sheet foot roller, they call it a pad foot roller.
Is it motorized?
Motorized, yes. If needed. All right.
You don't use that much doing that.
No, no, we just, we just, we hoping that the part, the part has got to come from Italy. And they say in four, up to four weeks to get it here. When the part comes in, we fix ours and put them back where it came from. And that's if we need it. If we got one still running, that one went down and the steering went down on it. It started leaking oil and that motor have to come. They had to order from overseas. There's a vibramac roller and the part is just, you know, it's just what it is when it comes to these parts. And that's if we need it. One other thing, it was brought to my attention about the parking on Highway twenty-five, were there parking trucks? I just need to know if y'all want to have signs put there to get that parking stop.
Rather than park for twenty-five a year down?
Yeah, yeah, down on twenty-five.
Just to.
There's been a ton of people that have called, that have said that they had one, one woman's husband called and said that they had this blonde man at home, the entire like, turned off the fat exit and set it down with the other one because she knew she could pull off, but there was all kind of trucks that she couldn't park. And then somebody else called and said that they're parking on trucks outside at night and that children are out there on the highway and so that's their situation, you know, going to be there. And one of those trucks that parked there for everyone always was tagged and belongs to somebody in front of us.
Can we, can we force that, that equipment to be removed? I don't know whether they have a right to park there or not. It has been parked side to roadside.
It's, we can, I think we can kind of do a couple of things. We can put no parking signs there and remove them from parking there. Or we can put signs there, requiring them to not park within a certain width of the road pavement. Yeah, people been, they've been parking there for a long time. I think even before it actually been, even when it was state highway. So it's, I'm coming to you all and you all to tell me what to do.
Some people stay highway, wasn't that way?
Well, it was, because I used to park that, you know, I had a truck. My driver parked there, but we parked on the, it wasn't but a couple of trucks at that time parked there. Since then, it's been. But yeah, my truck was parked there ever since back in the late eighties. I had a truck, I was running a truck when I was with the county before, and that's where we parked at. That's where he picked it up then and dropped it off every day.
Yeah, I mean, very intentional, still, the truck was probably the most needed resource we have in the country, the source. Where they parking, I don't know. They've been parking there since I remember ninety-five, oh. I don't know, where they parking with the, where they parking?
When you have a truck, that's what you're supposed to do, stop there. The county's not supposed to provide parking entries.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table until further consideration.
Park it on old twenty-five.
And that might be.
Those trucks, they had some that were tagged.
Further communication to, further communication in terms of how much force we can place on trucks.
Well, the citizen said there's no parking sign there, they just don't park there. He said that there's no enforcement, he said that can't go total, that's a fucking blanket. But we don't want them to, if there's no parking sign there, we don't support them.
Let's do this, I'll support tables, but leaning more towards, I guess, just let's think for two weeks.
Let's think about it.
I don't know what to do, because I don't want these guys that are, when you get up two in the morning and drive California out. I don't know, if y'all find a place for, if that's something we can rob, we can charge and have a big lot somewhere to take and park out.
We can, we can. Guys, let me look on the industrial, you're looking for a solution to the problem, how, please do what I can figure out.
Bring it back next week.
Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Collins, table the discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, last thing, y'all actually need to look into, man, and last thing without a ditcher. And we turn dead over heels into looking into it. We need to come up with a solution.
Does this thing, do we think outside ditch?
No, ma'am, that's his job.
It's probably the most critical thing, saw riding around, top top county this weekend, we be out. The gravel roads, apparently it improvised this thing and it worked for twenty years. But now that the roads are, I know in my area and everywhere, they're just running off the gravel. This is gonna create that hard line when it rains to throw it down the road.
It's no, the ditches have actually filled in with gravel and everything. And they haven't been pulled out in, what, about seven years? And, and so they are, they're, they're actually now, when it rains, a big rain, the road acts as a ditch more so than anything because there's no ditches there.
I think half recovered stuff.
Yeah, they half recovered and stopped up because the water filled the ditches in and they filled the covers in and.
You're just talking about the attachment, right?
That, yeah. Well, that, this is, we, well, let me get through the attachment first, but we need a grader to put it on. That's what, that's what.
I thought we had a grader.
We got grader, but.
We move forward again, advertise the grade, advertise the slope to.
How you, how you, talking like.
We can't afford it.
I'm asking anybody. Well, hey, this is not me now. I was actually doing this. I was actually bringing this to the board.
Why does it say compatible with any making model motor grader?
It is.
So why do we need to advertise for a motor grader?
We can't, once you put this on a motor grader, it hinders the operator from just operating it. He could operate, but it puts a hinder to it because it hangs to the side of that machine. If you put it on a grader and you, you graded it, grading every day. Now, as far as putting it on a grader that we building road with, no, you, you can't put this on there because it's in the way. It's gonna be in the way. If you put it on a grader that they're grading with all the time, then half the time they're gonna end up snagging mailbox. If you look at this thing on the next page, it's on the grader, but it sits out to the side of the grader. It's not just, and that makes the grader about two foot wider on one side than the other.
Why don't you just put it on one of the, we have three new motor graders, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we just put it on?
Those are grading grader, and you don't want them going down the road snagging mailbox over there.
You couldn't just put it on one of those three?
We can put it on, you can put it on either one of the ones we have. It'll go on any of them.
Are all three running every day?
Yeah, all three grade, they, they grade every day. Actually, it's four that grades every day.
And is this like the other counties you?
Yeah, that's, that's what they use for the ditch. Lee County has one, I think Winston County has two.
I can't sell it, man, how much is a motor grader, eight hundred?
Well, we, no, 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 no. We, I wouldn't, I would, no more than what this is gonna run, which is probably about three hundred hours a year. Once it gets all the ditches done, I would put it on a used machine like we did the last time.
Or we can do that now.
Huh? Uh, it's a used machine waiting or sitting right now.
Do you think about it?
Yeah.
He's not saying it out loud, so I'm getting, sorry.
It's a used machine that's sitting on the line at this point. That's, I think, got forty-nine hundred hours on it, it's all in that road shield. And it's just around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And that blew the mud right?
No, that, that, the ditcher is seventy-five thousand dollars. The ditcher is seventy-five thousand dollars.
So, Mr. Collins, I guess my, you said about three hundred hours like this year. You know, it stayed wet a long time.
And see, that's the thing, that's the good part about this machine. It don't doubt about it being.
So we can pull.
You can pull a ditcher all year long with this. You can pull the ditches and lay it right there on the shoulder of the road. That's the good part about this. If you can look at this picture, you can see that the grader is sitting.
Well, I mean, I know the greatest thing sitting in the road. I guess my concern was when you pulling, when, when the ditches are sloppy and wet, what does that do?
You just pull it right up on the shoulder and leave it laying, that's what you would do anyway. You'd pull that material right up on the shoulder and let it sit there until it dries out. And then you grade it into your road as they do the grading, and then they'll gravel it behind as needed. And that's what has been done throughout the thirty years that I've been here with October County. Back when I've done it, I've done it with an old machine that would kick the devil out. And we pull ditches, anytime you got ready, you can use this machine anytime you wanted to. Pull the ditches, put it right there on the shoulder of the road, leave it laying right on the shoulder. And then when it got dry, the material dried out, you bring it to, into the road.
Could you repeat tell us your estimated cost?
Estimated on the sloper is around seventy-five. The estimated on this grader is around a hundred and sixty-five.
If we just bought the sloper, can, can you put it on a piece of equipment? Put it on the old motor grader?
Yeah.
So you're telling me all four running all day, every day?
Not every day, but you, this is not something that you can take off and put on. Once you put it there, it's there.
I just, when I got on board, I think there one motor grader run?
No, they don't run every day, but they, they run, they, they have to run them within, you know, within a week time, they gonna run.
I just, I'm.
And when it gets, yeah.
I got on board, there was one running, right?
When they get, when they get, when it gets dusty, we, we try not to run them as much because it's dry, dusty, if, you know, you're doing, you ain't doing nothing stirring up dust. But when it, when the roads get rough, especially in the winter, you gotta run them on a regular basis.
You're just saying you need a dedicated, dedicated.
You need a dedicated machine for this. Because the fact that it's, it's out there, it's hanging to the side, and if you grading down a road like you grading every day, you have this tendency to forget it and there you go with a mailbox.
I guess my thought process, it, it, I got on board, there's one motor grader for Hope County.
No, 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 it never been one, no, one. We made when he started Hope County. It's, right now, it's four maintenance motor graders and two construction maintenance, or motors.
Yeah. I would say five, seven thousand, and put it on home. He stayed ahead of picking grading, because it can be working in the rainy days and everything.
Yeah, it can be, it can work anytime it needs to.
Let me ask you this, and I know we need, we, we, we need our ditches for the trainers. But the first time we pull them, and I guess I'm, I'm thinking about the bottles and all of that stuff that's.
It's gonna be.
Out of the ditches up into the road the first time.
We're gonna have to have people, this is what we'll have to do. We have to take a backhoe to go and clean out right at the end of the ditch because when it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, if we gonna come behind, have to put all that stuff up.
And then we gotta get behind it and we gotta clean up behind it. We definitely have to clean up behind it.
So you put it on the road?
Well, what, what we did, what we always done is we pull it into the road and then the crew go through and pick up bottles and sticks and the big stuff and get it out of the way. That's just part of it. When they start, when they start ditching, they gotta clean up behind it. Don't, you got everything, pieces of. That's just part of it, when they start, when they start ditching, they gotta clean up behind it, if don't, you got everything, pieces of metal and everything else, you definitely have to clean it up.
County administration control. Y'all left it back. Mr. Collins, amazing question.
Well, so, so let me ask this question, Dick, you, you got what, five hundred thousand dollars worth of trucks currently in the process of being bought?
Well, not in the process, we, we hadn't even put them out.
Didn't you bring that before the board last, last month?
Yeah, but we hadn't, we hadn't did anything, but yes, that's.
Alright, so you got five hundred thousand dollars worth of trucks, you got, now you're closing another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of, uh, equipment, all that coming out of the road, park, road, uh, fund, county road fund?
Yeah, road and bridge fund.
So, so the road, and I guess the reason I'm asking is because I'm, I'm trying to think through cash days on both levels fund, would we be able to think of this out of the bridge fund, do you think? Which probably stood the trucks for sure.
Well, that definitely would have, would, can come out of the bridge fund.
The trucks?
No, the motor grader, because it, yeah, it's, yeah, it does, it is dealing with drainage, so it definitely can come from bridge fund.
So right now, we're not, the question to put this out for bids, we, we already, you already got.
That's what my motion was, I didn't give up, I didn't give up sex.
Well, well, no, because, because he don't want to, he put out bids, he already done found a, a reason.
Why are you, why are you? Well, I'm, I, we will have to bid it, we will have to bid it, we will have to.
Buy your new motor grader and put your new motor grader to work, and then put this machine on one of the motor grader we got now, and you still, that's your, your new motor grader, you put it to work. You got a hundred and ninety-seven miles of gravel road, how many miles of road can you grade a day, about eight miles?
Yeah.
So, divide that by eight miles, that'll tell you how long it takes for you to go across this county to grade a road.
We got three and thirty-three thousand miles.
A hundred and ninety-seven.
According to, according to his plans, uh.
And that's, that's, that's kinda like the way we, we, we get brought through.
Well, okay, well, I, I, I wrote my, I supervised a trainer, that's a recommendation, what's your recommendation to advertise?
Our recommendation, advertise for a new motor grader and also to purchase this slope, uh, to put on one of our existing motor graders.
Okay, well, we, we, we can advertise and then when the bids come in, we can make a decision then.
Now, a sloper, it's, it's in the range where we can just take quotes on this, but the motor grader would have to take.
Okay, let's do two separate motions, need a motion to take quotes on the sloper. So, motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Carver, any other discussion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous, now we need a motion to advertise for a motor grader, uh, and then expect out, according to what we need. So motion by Supervisor Trainer, uh, second by Supervisor Williams, that we, uh, advertise for a motor grader.
Used, used, used motor grader.
Well, I think Supervisor Trainer, uh.
That's three hundred thousand miles.
New cat, new guy, get a new cat, because, because we got a hundred and ninety-seven miles of road, it take you twenty, twenty days to cover this whole county. And that's under ideal conditions, so when it's raining and the condition not ideal, it's gonna take longer than this. Buy that new motor grader and put that new motor grader to work, and put this slope on the, on the used motor grader, I mean, that's my suggestion, because motor grader is something we got to have.
Uh, uh, the motor grader we got, can one of them be retro for this, for this?
I can pull the one from district, the one that works in District Three, retrofit it to the blade and give a new one to District Three, that'll be a job. They, they have the, they have the oldest motor grader in the maintenance fleet.
We got a motion and a second by Supervisor, uh, Trainer, Supervisor Williams, any other discussion?
I'm gonna vote against this and fails, turn around with a motion for what I wrote my manager suggesting.
Okay, uh, we got a motion and a second, now this is just to advertise, this is not to purchase.
Right, so we're gonna accept it now at that point.
Yeah, at that point, so all in favor? Motion passes four one. Uh, 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 opposed, let's, let's go ahead, so, motion passes four one.
And I wanted to ask, we can advertise for a, a used motor grader too, you know? No, we can afford to advertise for a used, or we can afford to advertise for a.
We can, we can do both at the same time, we can advertise for a new one, that one kind of used.
Yeah, let's amend the, the, the motion to, to say advertising for new and used motor grader. I changed my word, yeah, okay, it's been, it's been, the motion has been amended, motion by, motion by Supervisor, I accept by Supervisor Trainer, that we amend the motion to read advertise for new and used motor grader, I would say, I think it's one small piece of, probably, maybe moving, we're gonna water runoff from.
It will.
Tension of the road along, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous.
That is the end of my.
Favoring on this, with the star, others, training, and all the starting. They're grinding up, that bad end of the day, yeah, we're grinding today, we're gonna mix, uh, cement in it, marble, and start paving lines to, to rest up and pave it a bit. That, that would give our, our, our road manager, our county administrator, and our control, the opportunity to work through the financing on this, depending on which one we need to build.
Alright, that's, that's it for me.
Anything else for our road manager before he leaves?
One question, are y'all, he's giving two quotes on this sloper thing, I'm purchasing this with him, that gonna come back.
Gotta get some quotes, you identified, but you gonna put it up out of quotes, yeah?
Yeah, I, I, I put it out for quote, uh, and I'm thinking that may be a single source, but I'm not positive. Uh, one other thing, we, uh, we were, the last meeting, we were met with, uh, concerning the covert and on South Gate, at, at the time, it was advised to us to, Rob and I to go out and take a look at it, we did do that, and Rob, uh.
That, that, that culvert is so far off the road, and I remember when I walked it, the, the gentleman that's next door to him, where this would connect has fairly cut out there, this is a private driveway. However, and so I don't think we can, can, to, can mess with this, however, I do think that I can talk to Tom Bigby, because there's more than just that culvert that needs to be cleaned out through there, there's a whole creek bed, ditch, I don't know what to call it.
Yes, it's some, it's actually some drainage, uh, on the other side of the road that need to be cleaned out, I did talk to that gentleman, and he did agree, but under the circumstances that we, that material, we spread that material, he said, unlike the last time, they put it in the pile and they put it on the slope, and the water couldn't get to the ditch, he did put some stipulations on it that wasn't hard to beat, if we can do it while it's dry weather, so, uh, that, and that ditch is detrimental to draining water off the road.
But I think you, you, you'd rather go with Tom Bigby.
Tom Bigby.
Yes, yeah, that's what, yeah, but I, I'm just looking for, no, I did talk to the gentleman and he, he agreed that under those stipulations, he, he would agree to let him go in there and clean that ditch out across his property, where that ditch drains to.
It's definitely a water flow problem, I mean, a hundred percent. It's, it's terrible up there there.
On both sides?
Yes, sir, you're, you're there, so if I can get Tom Bigby, Tom Bigby to go out there and give, get, put their eyes on it and tell us what we need to jump through, that's probably the best route to go, because it's, it's raining floodwater, there, it is actually flooding this man's backyard pretty bad, and that's due to all the water that's coming from that.
Every, yes.
Yes, sir.
So the recommendation is just to contact Tom Bigby?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Alright, yes, sir.
Anything else for our road manager?
I have one quick question, as part of my thing with the payroll changes that are coming up, is, are we talking about Isaac, um?
No, 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 that stands the same.
Well, then, that's the only one.
Okay, well, the other one, I, I didn't know if it got to you.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have the other one.
Okay.
The other gentleman, he was gonna leave, but he did, and I was about to cry.
Good, I, I did have one other thing for him, um, I guess under my, I put up lawless here, um, they, the county courts and the tissue, speed bumps for, um, Thomas Street down there, and they got a speed bump in that side, so they're, they're probably gonna get away from us with that.
Motion by Supervisor Little, second by Supervisor Trainer, that we install speed bumps in the town of Sturgis, uh.
On Thomas Street?
On Thomas Street, uh, any other discussion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous, anything else for our road manager?
Well, yes, uh, there was a bad accident that occurred over, over weekend, um, that's the area that we don't have speed bump, and they do some speeding, some raising, that stretch that we don't have. Could you talk to me about the possibility of, uh, adding, add at least one more anyway?
Alright, that's, uh, well, can we go ahead on and, and get board approval to do that, because I need the board.
That's a motion. Yeah, motion that we add at least one more speed bump on William.
Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainer, that we add, uh, one more speed bump, discussion?
I'll say this, I, I got caught, um, with excessive speeding on New Hook Church, and young girls are going swimming lessons, I almost got hit a couple times, so. I told the group of people if they wanted speed bumps to do what the city did, I made this up, to eight, if you can get a net threshold of eight percent of people on, on the street signature, that way you can get the sentiment to fill the town or the road, get the temperature to move, they immediately came back with ninety-five percent of signature. You did it, in, in hindsight, you're probably gonna get a lot of people complaining about them, because they're not used to them, there was a temporary one that you put down, I would highly advise against that, because they're, they're, they're almost, I don't know, great and slow business, somebody doing sixty, seventy of them, told me that it was too much, the one that you ended up on, you can run twenty on them, I, I've seen those be successful in both, uh, deterrence speeding and, and the constituents not be too upset when there's a middle ground. Those temporaries, they put them down, it was the thing that took me off road, set the sound running, they're, they're too high, they, you know.
But that, that, that's, he, we got some already down there, the lower one, and that's what I recommend being the lower.
You got them on William, right?
Uh, we got some, but we just need to add some more.
And, and I, I think.
Honestly, it says seventy-five percent of the people.
Yeah, those, yeah, those ones like you got now, those are the lower ones. They are lower.
All, all three of them. Uh, any other discussion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous, anything else for our road manager? If not, thank you so much for, for road manager.
Well, one, one, one other thing, and let me bring this, this to your attention, okay, um, and I talked to Rob about it just a little bit of this morning, and Keith just mentioned it to me. Uh, I got a situation where some people come in and they did a permit for a cover on the street, well, that street is not a county road. And, so I just wanna make the board aware of that, uh, when they coming in and get permits, I think we need to make them aware, when they're not on a county road, that we cannot put them a cover in because we don't service that road. And that may enter, uh, when she's doing the permit, she may need a way to look at the county map to know what, what she's telling them, so they don't beat me up later on.
They think they're paying for something.
Yeah.
Finish, if they, they think they're paying for a cover.
Well, see, they, when they pay that fee, they think they're paying for a cover, which they're not, they're paying for the permit, but they think they're entitled to a cover because they got that permit and they paid that fee, and so, I just wanna, kind of, let the board know what, what they thought.
Oh, please, they can make your map.
Well, I don't need one, I know the, it's, but it's, it's the young lady that does the, does the permits, she needs to know, so she can tell them, okay, this is not a county road, we can't put them a cover.
There's already a document exists, I use it all the time, my road list, on the very end, it says gravel, county private, is that last, you know, that?
Well, I, I'm just, and I'm just making this recommendation because of what I got beat up with, you know, they say, okay, I'm a taxpayer, but I can't give a cover.
But may, maybe just, just, uh, have, uh, person filling out, filling out the, uh, permit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Before she, before she fills it out, just call the road department and say, listen, you got a person requesting a cover on this road, is this county road, that'll sort of eliminate that issue.
Cause, you know, she was, you know, just not really, highly upset, but they was kinda upset because they couldn't get the service of having a cover, but, and I just want the board to know that.
Anything else for our road manager? If not, thank you, Mr. Collins, motion acknowledged, road manager before, motion by Supervisor Carver, second by Supervisor Little, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous, next we've got our IT Director, Mr. Carr Ziver.
Good morning. Good morning. This should be short and sweet. We've had some interesting adventures with our phone system since February, and definitely recently, and the phone system should be anything but interesting, it should be boring, and it should just work. Our vendor has suggested from day one that we replace it because it has been end of life by the manufacturer, and basically have a period of maintenance support on the phone system right now, uh, doing some due diligence, we could go two different ways, we could put this out for bid, or the state has a state contract vehicle that we can purchase off of, Seaspire is a sole awardee on the state contract system, if we chose to go that rate, that way it does have one major advantage, our current phone numbers are with Seaspire. If we went with somebody other than Seaspire, it would take us a minimum of sixty to ninety days to port those numbers out, and then we would immediately have to move to new hardware, which would be very difficult considering the breadth. While we've had many vendors that came in and Seaspire was not necessarily the lowest price, that were all very competitive, it is by far the best option considering that they can come in and slowly phase the new phone system in.
That would tell me how quick, are we gonna do this and pay this?
Yes, yes, and they can, uh, for the Seaspire pending approval, they could begin work as quickly as two weeks on, on the new system. I've got some, I did an example of what it would cost, about eighteen hundred dollars a month, um, if we had exactly the same service that we had now, but the way that the Seaspire system works is à la carte pricing, basically you pick a phone, you rent the phone, you add a line, there's no contract, you can add or delete at any time, so, the, I'm not asking you to approve eighteen hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents, I'm asking you to approve that we migrate from our existing phone system to the state contract Seaspire phone system.
Thank you, both of you accept my petition.
An estimate is about eighteen dollars a month, if, if there's more left, depending on what we submit in the implementation phase.
Motion by Supervisor Trainer, second by Supervisor Little, uh, any other discussion, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous.
Alright, thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have our county administrator, Mr. Carr.
Good morning. Good morning. I have just a few items, believe it or not, um, first up on the list is the, uh, corporate service degree with USDA, um, APHIS, which is, I don't even remember what APHIS, it's the beeper control, P B control.
Motion by Supervisor Williams, second by Supervisor Trainer, any other discussion, all in favor? Okay, you, uh, Supervisor Carr.
I would say, pertaining to this, the gentleman that's over this said that we have somebody that's in the road department that is charging a bunch of overtime hours for trapping, and that's not even, he doesn't supposed to do it, because if he steps in a hole and there's a trap there and it cuts the split off, so there should be no county employees doing any trapping, and they need to talk with you about that. That check with Victor might check, we're, see if he might.
We, we're contracted to the USDA.
There's county employees putting in a bunch of hours on Saturdays and Sundays checking.
Trapping?
Yeah, it says trapping on it, I can send all y'all, but it says trapping on the sound codes.
I think that's one person you had, yeah, I believe, that been doing a week.
I think that person's putting down those, uh, things anymore.
What? But excuse me, it just says trapping on there. So I talked to this gentleman, he said, somebody's trapping, USDA has stepped away because we have a lot of our business. We need to check in on that to see what's up.
I only know somebody, I, I know another person that, that does trapping. You say the road department?
I might send you, send you folks out now because he's doing that. This gentleman said they're gonna, they, you know, he doesn't want to step in a hole and have to go.
Trapping on. Okay, it's been motion and second, uh, that we, uh, entered the contract, uh, uh, continue the contract. All in favor? Motion passes and now.
Item number two on my report, the, uh, comptroller has done a, uh, analysis of the end of year, um, funds, in other words, we got about forty-three funds, all of which must stay in the positive, certainly must close at the end of the year in the positive. And a couple of these, two of these funds have gone into the negative. Um, if you have any questions, she can, she can hopefully address some of them. I make y'all aware that we have subsidized an AM one-one, uh, emergency communications fund as well as, uh, North Star, we're waiting on some reimbursements. That one will be a loan. When those reimbursements come back from the state, we will put those funds back into the general fund, but the other funds will not be a loan. That would be a straight transfer. Out of the general fund into each fund. So your question.
Good move by supervisor Trainer, second by supervisor Little, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes and now.
Third item on my, uh, list is the approval of invoices. They were provided in your packet. I'm trying to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, That was one of them. Maybe Bill would do it some. I was supposed to come before the board today to, um, to present the bid. Uh, I say he was supposed to come, he sent me an email about ten o'clock on Friday. I guess if he didn't hear back from me, he, he assumed he wasn't on the agenda. Um, and of course, their, their practice is upon bidding these projects, uh, he requests payment for the engineering services. If you'd like, we can table that until he's available to talk about it.
I make a motion, go ahead and move forward.
With motion by supervisor Trainer, uh,
Are we doing them in?
Um,
We're not doing them in.
No, we have done that in the past. I don't. So, so do y'all?
They all these.
Okay, you, you, you voted all to go ahead.
That's my motion is all of them.
Okay. Uh, I guess our work has been, been completed, uh, and the bid has been accepted, so.
I think I have a question about, uh, I guess, uh, Back of juice, Chris. Uh, we're gonna, we're still working on the back.
We're still working on the, if we can get that one, you, you know what I'm talking about, if we get her to, decide that she's on board with us, we should be in shape with that.
She's just, that's willing. That's the win. It's a win. I got all, I got the terminology.
You're not gonna get.
You and I, she's with off and.
He can get up and lift that up.
With motion by supervisor Trainer, uh, I second that. Uh, any other discussion on paying invoices?
Do we have an update on the elevator?
They, they've got the boards, elevator's on, so they keep just by the boards anymore. Uh, during the power surge that ruined the transformer, it also blew the board. And so they had to send them off, trying to get them repaired. They're old. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that they will be able to repair them so that they can't repair them. My only other choice is to put in new air, I mean, new elevators.
Because I'm just worried just even though the guy knows that it's out, he still felt this on inspection.
Yeah, maybe. If the elevator don't work, you fail. I, I know.
I will say that, uh, I'm gonna talk with Bubba Chanel about this invoice. I may get them to get paid out of closing as opposed to us preparing a separate check for them.
So they, they have sent in a couple of invoices throughout this process, but they're not, they haven't been very, uh, predictable in, in their billing. With that said, they sent this bill in and, uh, one of the conversations that I've had, need to have with Johnny Healy, I tried to call him quiet. He would be much better served getting paid at closing than he would getting paid waiting on us to go through the claims process. Cause if we go according to the timeline and closing happens before the claims process does. And he, he had stated in his meeting with us that he was gonna go through closing and then this invoice showed up, so I was gonna, I'm gonna talk with him, see what he wants to do, depending on that all comes out, I may have to pay through claims process with y'all's approval, we may handle it in closing.
So your recommendation is to?
I've got your approval, and, and if, if I need it to execute it, then I, I will through the claims process. If I don't, we'll work it through closing. Um,
Okay, all in favor, paying invoices?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion passes and now.
Last item on my report is, uh, just a few payroll laps in the, that's.
Motion by supervisor Carr, second by supervisor Trainer, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes and now.
That was to do it now, I'm sorry.
Rob, you gonna bring up about the, um, the meeting?
Yes.
That, that person that resigned, is one person resigned. Is he gonna steal? Did he change it?
No, no, apparently there's someone else that, that I haven't received yet.
And he, he was thinking it might have gotten on here, but it didn't, so.
But this one is actually.
That one is, should have been approved, yes sir. That's what I was trying to clarify.
That mosquito, uh, and, and, uh, that person right there.
Trapping?
That's the mosquito.
What's trapping?
Scott's getting used to it, trying to eradicate the mosquito problem.
That's what we do when he's dropping rain or in the water.
But I know he, I know he's got, he's got like me. Be, be very excited.
No. He, uh, the USA, yeah, I'm very sorry.
No, 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 let me get a mosquito. Who, John? John's the one.
That's it, John.
No, no, I ain't, I ain't.
I'll get with him.
Johnny knows that takes a special person to deal with me. Now, anybody can deal with mosquitoes, but now you got.
The one supervisor Williams left is on here, but, but Mr. has approached me about taking one more. And when I mentioned the name, he said, no, 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 not that.
Oh, Lord, he's tracking.
Okay.
I know who he's talking about.
So you have.
That's John.
That's the USDA guy. It was Al Wall.
Yeah, 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 you got the wrong idea.
Yeah.
Hey, you, you missed one.
I do it all.
All right.
Uh, okay, so I'm sorry, that concludes all of your questions. Any questions?
Not a question, while we've got HR, I mean, and this is not for us, but is there any way that we can, or do we make sure our employees know about open enrollment? And that, I got the email, but we're just posting, that's for all the department heads, get a letter to put in there, period.
I did, I sent it to everyone and then also asked them to print it out for their employees. And then also I'm gonna send out reminders and then we're gonna have something attached to check stuff as well. For flu shot and for open enrollment. So they're gonna get a lot of reminders and we're gonna make sure we can, um, stick them to their pages.
Oh, that'll be, that's the big worry.
We pressed the way we remember we put out.
Any, anything else for our county administrator? If not, motion to accept county, uh, county administration. Motion by supervisor Trainer, I mean Williams, second by supervisor Trainer, all in favor? Motion passes and now. All right. Uh, next on the gentleman, uh, Chief?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Can't, can't put a price on public thing. Just can't do it, just can't do it.
The donation?
I did not get it in.
Love.
Okay, next on the gentleman, then we got our chancellor clerk, Mr. Dibby.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Next, we've got our board attorney, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, we need to set a reset date for the closing, either September twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. That's for our hospital closing day.
Okay, good. The motion to set closing date September twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. Motion by supervisor Little, second.
Which date would y'all prefer?
What day, what day?
That's the twenty-fifth, the Thursday, twenty-sixth, right?
Any of which one's better?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, you have what? Y'all have a bid opening at ten AM on the twenty-fifth for new light road.
So these would be eight? Eight o'clock? Eight thirty?
Man, I've learned, I just hate these clocking me. I sit here scrambling around, trying to, trying to get everybody pulled together, get ready.
Well, that's the twenty-sixth.
These, these closings, this is a little different, so, yeah, we can, we can move it down. What time?
The beat opening is at ten.
Eleven, ten thirty? Ten thirty, I'm, I'm good with whatever. What time now?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty is?
Yeah.
And ten thirty.
Cause ten thirty will give our lawyers plenty of time to get here, travel, and, and, and if there is any last minute, trying to get some things together to give us that morning.
Ten thirty, so the motion is for September twenty-fifth at ten thirty AM.
I made the second on that.
We didn't have a second.
Second by supervisor, uh, the motion by supervisor Little, second by supervisor Trainer, uh, all in favor? Motion passes and now. Okay?
Y'all, I need a approval of a settlement. I need a motion to, this is the final settlement on the FLSA settlement with that Reese case that we were working on. If you remember, I had told you that it would be in the, uh, approximately thirty thousand dollar range. It ended up being in the twenty-seven thousand is what we ended up settling for. So I need a motion to settle said case.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Little, uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes and now. Uh, y'all, I just, and I think I'm right, there is two national search firms that, uh, will be on, on the twenty-fifth, I think. And, and I have to sit on that, that search committee by the replacement of, of our.
Yeah.
Link.
Director.
Well, that's the twenty-fifth.
Friday?
Friday.
Friday ten, okay.
And whatever. I, I make the motion to get me in the board meeting Friday night.
Okay, Friday at nine AM.
It's still the twenty, twenty-fifth, right?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. What kind, what time do you need? Well, the closing will be just the president signing the documents, right?
Well, I, I just.
It's a big, okay, well, Friday what time?
It's a pretty deal. Just following the habits of our lawyers.
They give them, they give them more time to get here.
Yes.
Or maybe like what?
We might have to take some official action.
Yeah, there's likely to be some, some resolution, you know, a resolution and, uh,
So supervisor Trainer amended the motion to eleven o'clock, Friday the twenty-sixth. Uh, second by supervisor Little, all in favor? Motion passes and now. Okay. Well, uh, attorney Roberts, was that it?
That is all I have for today. I'm sorry. So we'll be calling y'all for other things later, but first, thank you.
Okay, um, and supervisor Little, I think we've handled your speed bumps already on here, okay? Uh, I vote, uh, supervisor business, supervisor Little. Okay. Supervisor Carr.
That's true.
Supervisor Trainer?
Yes, uh, in lieu of all of the things that we have going on, I know we have to put the proceeds, I want the board to consider, uh, splitting the proceeds even five ways for the hospital side. They all, all, whatever the proceeds are, just split it even five ways, give each one of us an opportunity to, to, to use those proceeds and make an impact. How, the way we see fit, that's gonna benefit.
Is it legal to split it and not put it in a general?
Well, we have, we have to go through whatever proper challenge I had to handle, but I do know we had talked about several different things. And the reason being is I think we are, we are well aware of some of the needs here on T R County. First of all, we don't have enough, I don't care how many proceeds we get, to address all the needs and homes that we have. But the bottom line of it is that we'll be able to do something, in my opinion, that'll be very substantial. And all of our districts are not the same, we got different needs, different expectations, but I think it would be good to just, give the supervisor some flexibility to be creative and try to see how you can utilize those proceeds to make an impact in the county. Whatever you do in district three gonna impact you too. And so I just, I just want y'all to think about it, and then the second part I think that we ought to do is that we got a lot of projects here under contract. And I know we've got some, some, some bond money out there, but anything that we got on the contract, we need to go ahead and move forward with those contracts and, and get those out of the way. And then when we get some more stuff on the contract, move forward with those. Because time value of money is giving us, we got these projects under contract, got locked in, we need to go ahead and move forward. Because if you look at Pla's list, these things are moving targets. Uh, take for instance, I'm gonna use RTG Rose. Uh, he revised it, really within two months, and it went up just about a half a million dollars on his project. So when we get them and we get them contracted, we need to see, people need to be going to work and putting product on the ground because the longer we wait, a year or two years later, the price is going up. And so we got some stuff out there right now, I think Pla said we got about eight million dollars of stuff right there on contract. People will say, well, some of that may not be in my district. Well, it may not be, but when the next round comes around, everything may be in their district. So with these projects we got on the contract, and one that we got bided out, because I think we can open a bid on one next week, right? Supervisor Carr. When we open the bids on those, let's find ways to get those projects moved. Get them, get, get them, get them, projects led, get them contracted, even if we have to wait till the next season, we got the price already locked in. You see, so some of these projects, we may have to wait until we actually get our hands on the proceeds. But we need to come up with some kind of maneuver to go ahead and lock the price in right now. So that when we do have the money available, you know, the price won't go up. And so I, and I think that will save us, you know, save us a lot of money. And then also, uh, dealing with the cash base thing, I think we need to consider that too because, I mean, he said that for fourteen thousand dollars, we make a fine about thirty percent more income. I mean, to me, that's, 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 that's real money. And I know it's gonna create some extra work for our, our, our administration, but you're talking about a significant amount of, uh, work, you know, just on being able to do financial maneuvers. I think that's significant. And it's just food, though.
I have a comment on that. Telling y'all, really, I, I think, I don't think that the board moved it out. I have kind of thoughts of every, of every, um, district. Getting about three million for some stuff like new lights that I never get down on the phone without it, and then that'll label about forty million and put that in an endowment. In the meantime, we want to talk to people statewide, they're saying, I would almost want to task the county attorney, if y'all know if, uh, if that can even be possible, if any proceeds went to each district, no matter what, if that were, if any amount would come back to each district before it went into an endowment, if that's even legal, I think it's gotta go into, into the unit system. I think it has to go into the general, and we have to have a vote on it.
It is gonna get deposited into the general fund regardless.
You have to do that.
And, I mean, that's just what's gonna happen. And then if you guys decide to budget it in a certain way, then that's your prerogative.
That's what we do anyway. But that's just, that's just, uh, but I do know we got to make a decision.
Is it fifty-five million proceeds?
Actually, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be.
Is that the last estimate?
It's, and it's not gonna be all at one time, not like you gonna have a check. And it's not gonna be all at one time, not like you gonna have a check with a amount all at one time.
It, it, yes, sir. We could get John Pierman to tell us all about it, but you're, you're correct. Some of it will be in account receivable, that'll be collected later. Some of it's gotta be eschewed for run out of insurance, medical insurance. Some of it's gonna have to be placed for tort claims. So it is, it is a little bit, when you talk about the total about, there are certain purposes that may be misleading. If we wouldn't have the total about immediately available for distribution.
Well, my theory, and just sitting there thinking, I kinda went from putting it all in down and saying, if each district, you know, if you could earmark it in that way, take the politics out of it, and each person, cause three million dollars, all five of us, that's fifteen dollars, that's leaving forty. And then the original math that we saw was based on, we had two or three different models, the low risk and the high risk. And, uh, that I, I don't even know. I just sit there going, man, what an immediate response I can give back to people, give them three million dollars in the world. And then the rest.
Y'all want to prove it? You hear that, did I say most?
Sometimes that's a lot thinner, but I'm sitting there going, man.
At least you got some kind of direction, you said.
Well, not, you know.
I don't wanna give it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit there and not below it in the sense. That's money that can make money long-term. The model, I remember forty million generated a couple million interest.
So what would you do with the, with the return on proceeds, the interest on proceeds? You still can.
Oh, that's gonna have to be every board, every year, through what Columbus and I understand does. That's two and a half million generated. They told, they do bathrooms, they do all kind of.
Oh, yeah, they do a lot of that.
A lot of stuff. But that's money that forevermore, and that forty grows to seventy in thirty years, man.
Well, just a, just a, they got thirty. Uh, they had four, they, they got thirty originals, of course. They got thirty-nine now. They've drawn off thirteen million.
So that's why I don't, I, I'm, you lose my vote on, let's just spend it all right now because.
Well, see, it depends on what you're spending on, even if you took it all and spent it. But this is my theory.
Would you want three million for your district, would you be?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, I'm ready to support the second emotion right now. But what I'm saying is, is that, you know, you, you can invest in a lot of things that gonna have a, a broad impact across the county. As I look at my district and look at some of the things I'm doing, I mean, you know, we just got so many opportunities that I would try to figure out a way to have an impact, you know, from really all across the board. And I know you said, well, you can chop it up so much that you may not do anything significant. But there are some things that if you put the pencil to it and do the research, that's gonna bring back a little higher return than other things. Based upon some of the challenges you're dealing with.
Yeah, I like the motion in the section, uh, there, uh, request, uh, because, keep in mind now that we only have two years to work. So we need to start making plans in terms of what we're gonna do with the funds that we're gonna end up acquiring to go into our district. We don't have much time to plan, and we don't have much time at all to implement.
What you could think about how much we're gonna get about that thing? To save the real home.
Well, if we make a motion, we can know that I can start planning for this particular role, or I can start planning for other things. But if we wait until next summer to actually know what we're getting and how we're gonna plan for it, that's a little too late.
You probably got enough on that contract list.
Oh, he's right here. Oh, you got enough on this list to eat up everything that, that's coming.
You don't need my thing. But I, I would.
There's some other things too that not on this.
I would say.
This is all just rose up.
Yeah, but keep in mind that that thing.
I, I would say, let's get the check in the hand. I, I would say, let's do that.
Okay, well, I know.
Get the check in hand, anything's gonna be settled in that after that. And I'm gonna be brutally honest with this, I would wanna make sure that that were, if something, any amount were, were pulled out of the general pot and could give immediate, you know, back to people, I wanna make sure that my percentage of the check that somebody would make would drive. You know what I mean? That's what I wanna make sure legally, is that if we're gonna buy it five ways, um, you know, taking something off the top and put it immediately back on the road. That's what I'm, I wanna make sure.
And I, and maybe saying that the value, value may not be in compliance with the unit system.
I don't know.
Because the unit system, you know, is addressing the needs regardless of where they are. But at the same time, you know, we serve the constituents. We're representing, you know, about the constituent, and each one of us, you know, should represent about a fifth of the county. So you should be able to, to quantify and make suggestions based upon the needs that might, your constituents have.
One thing you can do though, each person.
Well, can, 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 have we sort of getting this closing behind us? And I think this.
That's all I had.
A little premature conversation, I, I think, to be putting this much out because, you know, one, we're talking about splitting five ways and, you know, where we can, the, the, the better statement might be the budget for infrastructure. But anyway, uh.
I prefer that.
Uh, supervisor Williams, you, you, you got anything else to add?
Well, we just need the budget for infrastructure.
Uh, I've got, I've got one quick thing, but, but I, I do wanna go into executive session right quick to, uh, talk about personnel. Uh, so.
So what?
Motion by supervisor. I've been in communication of, or I've been, I've been called on several occasions. There's a family that, that moved in a brand new home and needed sewer services. And they came to you and requested put in a package unit, but you denied them. But it's been almost three months now, they still don't have any sewer.
We don't have any construction money to do that.
So, so you denied them sewer service, but now they're sitting there with no sewer for three months. So, so that's.
Not having the service. We don't have the money to put the grinder pump in because we don't have.
Yeah, but, but that's not helping them sitting there in a home with no sewer, with no sewer service.
I understand.
And so that's, that, that, that goes back to some, I'm not gonna even get into it. But, but anyway, you, you asked, so I told.
All of our ones we've installed have all been done with money from U.S.B.A. rule development. And it, it goes in the plan before the deal is done.
And that's understandable, but you do, you, you do have the option to allow them to put in a package unit, and you denied that.
No.
Yeah, you do.
That's what state law doesn't allow that. Once that sewer line goes in place, they're required to do that.
But then the sewer line is not in place. You hadn't, you hadn't, you hadn't given, you gave. If they had the option that you could get them hooked up with sewer, that would be one thing. But you've had them sitting there for three months now with no sewer.
What's the physical?
Because you can't hook them up.
What's the physical address?
I'll get it to you after.
That's what I really need to know.
But, but the machine's been sitting there for two, two and a half months.
Oh, I know who you're talking about now.
All right, good, good, I'm glad you did.
And we're, we're working on getting it done.
Well, that's three months, that's, to me, unacceptable to, to have a family sitting there with no sewer. And you will not supply them sewer, and this board has given you nine million and took some of that back. And now it's continuing to give you money, and you won't offer sewer services for families that need, that's the basic need of a family, sewer service.
The money coming from this board has, has nothing to do with that particular issue.
I understand, you asked, you asked, and I told. So we know who that is. Uh, it's been motion by supervisor Train, and second by supervisor Little, that we go into closed session to determine if we need to go into executive session. All in favor? Deal with personnel issue. All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. All in favor, motion passed, adjourned.
Would you say to include?
Need motion by supervisor train.
Make motion, we have purchased uniforms for OCH employees.
Second by supervisor little, all in favor, motion passed, adjourned. Uh, if there's nothing else now, we need, um, reset, recess meeting until.
We gonna do N B M twenty-fifth of the bill?
No, that.
No, that'd be us, couldn't be none.
So we'll stay in recess till the twenty-sixth at nine.
We've already done that, we've already done that.
Eleven.
Okay, eleven, okay, eleven.
Well, first of all, you got a meeting on the twenty-second, which is an open house meeting, I guess, that's not a board meeting, but it's.
That's right. Yeah, that's, that's, at the, uh, safe room.
Okay.
That's five thirty.
That's five thirty. I won't make that one either, but.
All right, um.
Twenty-sixth, oh, at eleven, twenty-sixth at eleven, sorry.
Motion to the general.
Don't move.
Motion supervisor, trainer, second by supervisor, all in favor, motion passed, adjourned. I'll, uh, y'all will need to get on some of those games.
Find out about, uh, they, they, they'll be, who you think I need to call.
Probably, 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 uh. Yeah, they, 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 but yeah. But you'll need a list of the employees, you know, that's what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, this is not a party, I mean, this is, this is, they just have that board on the end.
Name and size. We'll, yeah, yeah. I would say. Well, I would say, just prove the name to them, so that I can, that the person can call, can give their side. And O C H may have all that information, make sure, make sure, make sure.
I'm going to make him, y'all.
Okay, be careful.
Yes, sir, three. Based off, based off, based on. May have a few more, but, um.
Well, well, you know, we got to the eleven point meeting, uh, you're bored. I haven't read it. Okay. You can't, thanks, we got your side, I haven't read it. Okay. Yeah, it's a problem though, so it's like a problem on feet. Um, I was, I was. I know we got months, so. Are we off?